I will call to order the regular meeting of Dayton City Council for May 27. Stand for the pledge.
I really give to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a motion and a second for the agenda.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we have one item that needs to be adjusted. Payment claims needs to be reduced by $508 due to a dual payment, so just want to FYI on that. Payment claims needs to be adjusted by $508 for a Summit Fire Protection payment that was listed twice on the payment of claims. $508.
Okay.
Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Any other changes?
I would like item H moved out of consent.
We'll pull item H out and add it to...
Is that right after?
I guess right after, yeah. Any other changes? All right, with those amendments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Should I be reporting if I could say it's not here, or are you ready?
Yeah, I'll get that. I'll load that. She'll be coming in a little bit late.
Okay, and with that, we have board recognition.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have a very unique opportunity to recognize police, fire, and EMS tonight due to a call that happened on April 8th. Chief Inga will talk about that a little bit, but I want to take an opportunity to talk about some statistics real briefly. Cardiac arrests happens about 356,000 times throughout the year in the United States. During that, about 90% of those are fatalities. If they're within a hospital facility, there's about a 25% greater chance of them actually staying alive, if you will. And tonight, like I said, we don't often get the opportunity to see the results of our efforts. So if I could have Tom and Kendall come on up, if you just want to stand next to me. So that's roughly about 975 deaths a day, and we are fortunate enough tonight and had a great opportunity to talk to Tom probably about a week after you were out of the hospital, which was pretty exciting for me. So I'll turn it over to Chief Inga to read about what we, the response we had.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. On April 8, 2025, the Dayton Police Department, Dayton Fire Department, and North Memorial responded to a medical emergency involving an unconscious adult male at residence in the 18,000 block of South Diamond Lake Court. Upon arrival, first responders located the male, later identified as Tom, who was not breathing and had no pulse. Without hesitation, the Dayton Police Officers initiated... Initiated life-saving compressions and providing supplement oxygen for approximately 20 minutes. Personnel from all three agencies worked together with relentless focus and determination to sustain life until Tom could be transferred to the hospital for further care. Tom was given a critical second chance thanks to their rapid response, advanced training, and unwavering commitment. Because of these efforts, the Schmidt family has been gifted additional time with their beloved husband and father, a priceless outcome made possible by the professionalism and heart of those involved. We commend the following individuals for their outstanding service and teamwork. Officer Brian Murphy. Officer Eric Juttenen. Assistant Fire Chief Kevin Astrup. Fire Captain Joe Tiedemann. Firefighters Ralph Ash, Lucas Herod, Sharon Bogle, Bill Bogle, John Knudsen, and Brad Bergman. Paramedic Captain Tim Hagers, Paramedic Lena Hall, and EMT Erin Hawkinson. Your actions reflect the highest standards of public service and exemplify the dedication, courage, and unity that defines our emergency response community. Thank you for your exceptional efforts on behalf of the city of Dayton.
You know, words fail me. Tim, what do you say when you get a second chance at life? One of the biggest things that caught me off guard is when I came to with the cardiac team of surgeons, which are the best in the state, how they looked at me like, almost like I was a ghost, like I shouldn't be there. And, you know, I realized I shouldn't, but the reason I am is because of all of you. Without your response time, your training, your incredible ability to execute in a time of crisis, I would not be here. So on behalf of my wife Kendall, our two daughters, Mackenzie Violet and the Vivi family, thank you all so much. We really appreciate it, and God bless. Thank you all so much.
Wow, 10%. 10% make it, huh?
Which one was yours? Which?
I'm one of the 10%.
Did they do CPR on you?
No. No.
But you have a pacemaker?
Defibrillator.
Okay.
No, I waited 17 hours after the heart attack to go in. I was going to drive myself, but they insisted on sending an ambulance. I said, no way. Costs too much money. Why wouldn't I?
I was waiting for that. I knew why you waited.
Why you wanted to drive yourself?
Wouldn't expect anything less. If you had said anything different, I would have been shocked.
I went up and took a shower and came down and said, we don't even have to go now. I'm feeling good.
Absolutely not.
Did you get a stamp also?
Yeah. I'm assuming you did too. Either that or bell or open heart. I didn't know it was 90% die.
Oh, yeah, I want to order. It doesn't matter.
It might be.
I got a clicker on my clicker when I'm ordering. I knew one.
Yeah.
Nope.
Or where, what kind of a heart attack it was. Can't say what I know. Well, it's pretty quiet in here.
It's always public safety they come for. How come?
All right. Um, next?
Can I move your mic, Mayor? Thank you.
Consent. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion? And this is sans H, which we took out. Any discussion? I had something, but guess not. Nothing? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent carries four to zero. And then item H. Municipal consent for purchase of Dayton River Road property. Need a motion and a second for that.
Did we take it out? There is no discussion or?
We can. I was just going to get the motion and second.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept it.
Need a second?
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
I'll do the second. What?
We pulled H out, and now we're discussing.
And now we're discussing H, yep. All right, we got a motion and a second, and then now we can discuss.
So I asked board to be moved because they want us to really be thinking about how we continue down this path. This is another purchase passed when we said we were not going to approve anymore. And I think we need to be real careful at this point. I know there was discussion at the work session, and so there's, you know, enough to approve this without me, but I think that we just need to be aware that we really haven't gotten Three Rivers to agree to anything different than their master plan of owning the whole river, which I just want to say again, we never, this council or the previous councils never agreed to as being the plan for this river trail.
Anybody else?
I'll make a comment. Yeah, the only, I'm going along with this. I made the comment at the work session. I do, and before another one of these happens, we are going to hopefully have that conversation. And I think we talked about another work session, at the work session, and I hope at that time we can get it all resolved. That's my goal.
So... Yeah, this one, I think we kind of decided because it stood out as unique due to the condition of the hole.
Yeah, and I don't want to hold Tom, I think it was Tom, right? I don't want to hold him up.
But yes, I agree with the sentiment. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Item H passes four to, or three to one. And we are on to open forum. Anybody here for open forum? Anybody online for open forum? Are you telling somebody that?
Oh, sorry. No, talking to somebody that is.
Are we good?
Yeah, so for open forum, if you wanted to speak, you can use the raise your hand function.
All right. I will go on.
You guys know something?
Yeah, there are secrets there. They're passing notes or something. I have all notes. All right. Staff consultant council updates. Tac.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I just want to want update tonight. It's mostly just appreciate the feedback from last week's weekly update. You guys, or most of you responded. If you have not responded, I really greatly appreciate that feedback. It's extremely critical for myself, and I'm going through and giving direction items and knowing what the council had on these items is extremely, extremely helpful. So when you do respond, I greatly appreciate that. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Okay. Amy?
I do not have any updates for tonight.
Marty?
I have a couple of things. While the head treatment plant work is continuing, the roof is on. There's, they'll be working on masonry stuff and still some finishing up work on the roof itself. Well, fire startup was completed last week. It went very well. Got a high capacity while there.
What was that going to be rated at?
Well, we tested it 1,400 gallons a minute to 1,800 gallons a minute, so somewhere in that region. All things being equal.
Unless it changes.
Yeah. I'm not tempting fate with that. Irrigation work is carrying on. They've done a lot of the work at LC Stevens. They moved over to River Hills now, so they're working in that area. LC Stevens master plan, the update for that, the first steering committee meeting is tomorrow between 4:30 and 6:30.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This afternoon, actually this morning about 10:30, we had an opportunity to meet with one of the assistant chiefs from the Bezicon Fire Department from Ukraine. They stopped by and thanked us. They left us one of their department flags to hang in the fire station, so it was a cool opportunity to understand how the truck is being used, and they've already had a couple fires there. So it was fun to meet with them. Also, Councilman Slonik, thank you. I appreciate the couple hours that we spent the other day. I encourage the rest of the council, if you would, to come visit with me. We had a great opportunity to sit and chat, and so I greatly appreciate your time.
Chief?
No update.
Tom? Jason?
A couple things. 90% die, huh? That's a lot.
Yeah, it's about 90%, unfortunately.
It's surprising, actually. Let's see, I talked to, I have something that I, a little bit of feedback or, there is a gal that has been coming down South Diamond Lake Road, and I've seen her like four times already this summer, this spring. About every two weeks, she picks up along South Diamond Lake Road. Lori Hansen is her name. She picks up all the garbage off the road and brings it back home. To me, I think that's a good recognition thing for the communicator. I did talk to Zach about it, and then I'll get him some information and do a little write-up if we need to or whatever. I think that'd be a nice thing to put in there. And there's probably more people out there that are doing that. I just don't know about them, so. Tomorrow's meeting, 4:30?
4:30 to 6:30.
Oh, I was told six. That's, you're getting all the major details done before I get there, right?
I was going to say. They may be fine with you missing the meeting.
Probably a couple months back, maybe not, maybe not that long ago, because the South Diamond Lake Road deal came in so cheap, Zach had asked about other projects that might be out there. I'd be interested to know what East French Lake Road would take to mill and overlay that. I mean, I don't think we can buy enough time that we don't have to do something to that road before, before we get a, an eventual river crossing or a Zanzibar, you know. To me, to me, something's going to have to happen on that road before then, so it'd be interesting to know what that would cost. Ideally, the whole East French Lake Road and 125th, but I know that that's going to be way over budget if you did the whole thing.
Based on prices from South Diamond Lake Road, it might be in the neighborhood of 700 or 800,000 for the entire stretch. That would be territorial all the way north to 125th and then all the way east to Fernbrook.
You think so?
Mm-hmm. At very high level measurements.
So you got my message then?
I did. The other, that is scheduled for next year. It's already in the pavement management plan. There's actually one segment in there that's pushed out to 2028, but we would pull that back and do it at the same time anyway, so it is already planned for next year.
To me, if we could get that, I mean, it's so cheap. I was surprised that South Diamond was only 800, 800 something.
Yeah, very favorable.
So, that's really all I've got.
I don't have anything, and I apologize for being late.
Can I piggyback off of Councilor Slonik's comment? I just want to make sure, can I get the poll for the council if you'd like us to look into that project this year? It is one year early, not saying that we can't do the project early, but it is planned for next year to do that project. Is that something the council would like to look at, have us look into? Because if it is, then we need to do plans and specs for it and get it all taken care of if that's what the council wants to do.
Well, I really like what I mentioned to you was Stevens Park, but I mean, that's a ways out, so we can't, we can't really do that one.
Only because it's me master plan, otherwise we'd say, yeah, sure, sounds great.
Is there a good reason to pull it in here?
Only thing would be the bidding environment that's currently there is, we know the prices are roughly, and we can kind of have a general idea. We don't know what that should be.
Does it seem like we're at a dip in that environment?
Well, South Diamond is supposed to be 1.3, 1.4.
Well, last year, they said the prices were staying or going up, and they dropped like quite a bit.
Right.
So, yeah, I wish I had a good sense. We did get very favorable pricing on Batuminas this year, for sure. I don't know if that'll carry to next year or not.
Yeah, I don't know either. I've heard from multiple communities that they are getting good bids as well, from sewer projects to water tower projects to anything, projects really, but I don't know if that's going to carry till next year, I'm unsure. That would be the only reason you'd say, okay, pull it in.
Yeah, that's the only reason. I mean, it's favorable.
If we get the work done, it carries, right? It'll carry into next, into next year.
The, the design and the preliminary stuff.
Well, if you do the preliminary, like plans and specs and stuff, that won't ever go away, is our guess.
Oh, for sure. Yeah. And then I suppose we could, we could go out for bids, and if they seem high, we could wait here. I don't have, I don't know that I have a problem with that.
What were the other projects we were thinking about doing though with the, with the surplus, I guess?
So it wasn't a surplus in quotes, but it was, there was some leftover dollars available. Could we use those for something else? We looked at a parking lot expansion of this facility only because the parking lot pavement has gone really well with this project, but it's still over capacity when there are people here. I know it is fairly well-used during the sports season, I'll say, and I think it's pretty well-used during the school year, but not as drastic. Another one was Public Works Facility that we had talked about doing an expansion of the parking lot there based on the design that was done when the Parks, Public Works building was put in. Both of those projects weren't engineering, like really cheap or easy projects to add on. That's why we haven't brought those back to council yet.
Okay, so that was my question, because those were, so those are kind of off the table regardless.
They're not really off the table, but we could look at doing those. It's, I'm going to look to Jason to say, the idea was, okay, can we spend 200,000, 250,000 and get a couple of additional spots or anything? That would be favorable, but really, when you add 30 spots to a parking lot for 250,000, it seems to be like that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but.
Okay, so then I would be interested in, at least as like the mayor said, the work, even if it winds up being more expensive than we anticipated, the work can be used for next year. It's not like we'd have to redo that work, so. It seems reasonable.
Yeah, I agree. My preference was that we would look to things that were on our pavement management list already, and so pulling this one forward, even if it's just the design work, makes sense to me.
Okay. I'll get some, right?
I'm surprised that you can get it all done from territorial all the way over to Fernbrook.
Hopefully my measurements were, they were quick.
Probably three miles, I'd guess.
Okay.
Well, when was that put in? Like '05?
When was that built?
That road? I want to say it was...
1999, I think.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's in pre-2000.
East French Lake Road, I think it was 1999, yeah.
125th was later, I think, though.
125th might have been later.
Oh, that's...
125th was later, but not... Yeah, I think it was, I thought it was '05, '06. Yeah, that sounds right.
East French Lake has got to be the worst cobblestone road we got in this city.
The only one left that's cobblestone, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, it keeps the riffraff out.
Sorry, thank you.
Ah, where are we at?
Oh, you, Mayor.
Yeah, I, yep, I don't have any.
Nothing for me.
I'm good.
Okay. We are on to item P.
Sorry, Mayor, members of council, I don't have my clicker tonight, and I don't know where it went, so I'm running ragged here. Okay, so this is just a budget discussion for ideas on the 2026 budget, and give you a whole lot to work with, maybe some, just some background information in the packet. I want to provide a little background information just because we do have two new council members that may not understand the budget process, and I want to make sure that they understand the process. I know this may be repeating myself for some of you, but essentially, the budget starts in April. It really started in May for us, so the things in April for city staff side of sending out the budgets and so on and so forth, and sending out things for department heads to do what was really more in May than April, that's just due to time constraints. But we did get a strategic plan done, which was greatly appreciated. That happened in April with the council, and I greatly appreciate that. That gives us some good headway on what we need to look into. We drafted long-term plan. We put together budgets for us overall as a staff level. We come back in June and talk with the council, so similar to what we did last year, talk about budget, preliminary budget requests, discussion on that overall. And then city staff goes back to work and says, based on what those discussions happen and what the response back is, we'll work on that budget back and forth in June. In July, then we will bring forward the long-term plan. That comes forward in July, and that will be a longer discussion, typically a workshop that happens with, we put together what we call one-pagers, the next one to two years' worth of purchases on that long-term plan to be able to have council review those. And then in August, we have workshops, typically both of those meetings in August. Doesn't mean they have to be, but that's generally how it works, to review the tax levy, to review the long-term plan overall together as a group. And then September, we pass the budget for the preliminary tax levy. That sets the ceiling for where we're at with the levy. We can always come down, we cannot go up. October, we work on utility fund budgets overall. It'll typically only take about a meeting to work on. We'll have a final long-term plan discussion with the council, have anything additional in November if we need anything else, and then December, we adopt everything. So that's kind of the timeline. My goal this year is to try to chop that up a little bit. That's the typical timeline. My goal is to try to have a few less meetings and workshops on other things, and not so much in the budget this year because everyone seems to have budget fatigue by the time we get to December, and we've talked about the budget for the last eight months, and everyone is rolling their eyes at what time we get there. So the primary role for council is to set the goal. You guys are the ones driving the vision for what you want to see for next year's budget, and then our, our job is to basically hit that goal or hit that budget as much as we possibly can. If we can't, then there's a reason for it, and we will discuss and figure out what we have to do to adjust back and forth. But the idea is that city council sets the goals and the visions for city staff, and then our goal is to hit those areas of focus within the next year or two. City funds overall, just so that you're aware of these, the hundreds is the general fund. We only have general fund 101 is what we call it. That's our operations budget overall. This is primarily supported by property taxes. There's other fees that go in there. There's intergovernmental revenues that we get in from the state or from a county. Otherwise, there's interest and such, but most of it is driven by property taxes. The 200s are special revenue funds. These are specific for one item. This is where the EDA dollars are laid at. Those are specific for economic development. We have some police forfeiture dollars that are in the 200 funds. Essentially, they're revenue that can't be used for anything. They have to be used for a certain item. Debt service funds are the 300 funds. If you ever see those, those are all for governmental bonds. We don't have a ton of them. I think we have five or six, maybe, not overall that many. The four hundred funds are the ones we focus on, the long-term plan mostly. These are our capital project funds. These are like capital equipment, capital facilities, um, park dedication funds, trail dedication funds, anything related to basically larger projects from the city, pavement management, stormwater, that are not funded directly by a utility, um, as in, um, like a fee that we collect for service. But, uh, more form taxes and/or other areas, whether the development fees or, or whatnot, those are typically for larger multi-year projects. And the six hundred funds are all driven by utilities or they're like a service that we provide. Those are the water and the sewer funds. calculation for those, so basically, the left-hand side, the one hundreds through the four hundreds are considered property tax levy. That's all those are funded primarily. Now, there's other fees in, that go in there, but primarily driven by property tax levy. And then the six hundred fund is all about user fees. The definition of those, so tax levy, so this is where, just a little bit of background, is that tax levy is the actual dollars that we get. Those are set one time a year, and that's all we get. That's no matter if there's fifty homes built, a hundred and fifty homes built, or two homes built. Um, we have the same levy dollars come in for that year. Tax capacity is the amount of dollars in the total value of property. Um, essentially, it's set at one percent or two percent of your total house value. If we have a four hundred thousand dollar house, a hundred percent tax rate, which we'll get to in the second minute, or second, throw a bullet point here, a hundred percent tax rate would mean that we, we would charge four thousand dollars of tax revenue on that four hundred thousand dollar house. That's one percent. That's considered a hundred percent tax rate. If you're a third of that, which is roughly where we're at right now, it would be a third of four thousand dollars. I'm not gonna do the simple math. I think it's like thirteen hundred bucks or something like that. The tax rate is taking that levy, dividing it by the tax capacity and getting a tax rate. That's how everyone is then charged, um, for their taxes for the year. And then those depend on if you're a commercial property, industrial property, or residential property. Those have different tax values. And your total tax bill is addition of all the property taxes that you pay, which are not just city. Um, they could be county, state, um, school district, so on and so forth. Those are the kind of the main three. And then again, all I mentioned before, levy divided by tax capacity equals our tax rate. I did not update the market exclusion numbers. I forgot to do that today, so don't import those numbers. They don't mean anything right now anyways. They mean something, but they're different than what they show on the P, on the PowerPoint. Biggest takeaways I wanna make sure that we go through is think strategically and with vision when we're going through the budget process. It's a process, not an event. Ask as many questions as you need to, and then collaborate together as best as possible. Questions for the council that I have tonight, and I'm gonna grab my piece of paper to write down any notes I have, is what are your priorities and goals for the twenty twenty-six budget year? Planning for the future, what are your five or ten-year goals for the city of Dayton in terms of long-term planning? And taxes are always the biggest topic of discussion, and this should be no different. What you would be focusing on? Tax rate, tax levy, or both? And if both, which one is the tiebreaker vote? So if the tax rate was perfect, that came back, if the levy's too high in your opinion, is that okay? Or vice versa? If the tax levy's perfect for your vision, but the tax rate's too high, is that okay? So that's my questions for tonight. Otherwise, I just have the money tree, as Scott always likes to say.
I see, I was kidding.
It is nice.
Where, where can you find that tree?
I've been searching for four years. I still have yet to find it, but I have a feeling it's somewhere behind City Hall, but I don't know.
So, given that we know what the capacity is, except for this caveat I'm gonna throw in.
Yep. There's always caveats.
Tax levy and tax rate are just math.
Yes, yep.
So. Yeah, it just seems odd to me that they're juxtaposed there. And the caveat is, we seem to occasionally get hit upside the head with fiscal disparities, like surprises, and, uh, we did last year again. Um, how, is there any way, in the year before, it was the, the county just plain-
Forgot the TIF.
Screwed up.
Yep, county screwed up with the TIF for Graco.
Yeah, and both of those were significant.
Yes.
I, I don't know how we protect against that. I, 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 I don't know. But they were, they were big hits for both years, so.
They were big hits for both years, yep. So fiscal disparities just for, you know, general public, for if you're watching this afterwards, the fiscal disparities is set based off of commercial property value, and essentially twenty, essentially twenty-five percent of that value is immediately removed out of the city, and then a portion of that is given back to the city, essentially, that's how it works. Um, if we give TIF on any of those projects, we'll use Graco as an example, we then have to pay a hundred and twenty-five percent of that taxes on that property. So what happens is, is that twenty-five percent of that value goes away. They still pay their taxes into the county. We still get the taxes from the county. We give them back to Graco for their TIF, um, contribution, whether that's for roadway or for whatever it may be. Um, but still twenty-five percent of their tax capacity went away from the city, and we do not get twenty-five percent back. We are an ultimate giver to the, to the system of fiscal disparities. Um, what fiscal disparities is supposed to do is a seven county metro area of Minneapolis and St. Paul that redistributes, um, what am I gonna call it, tax capacity wealth from higher industrial properties to more residential. However, Minneapolis is a huge winner of the overall fiscal disparities thing, so that contradicts what I just mentioned. So that's where the confusion is. There is no formula for fiscal disparities. I can't recalculate it. I have tried numerous times and have failed every time. Communities that are winners and losers around us, if you look at Champlin, they are an overall winner. They collect about two million dollars of extra tax levy every year. If you look at Rogers on our west side, they are an ultimate loser of the overall facility, and they lose about six million dollars of tax levy every single year. So, um, depending on how our city is built out, is depending on how much we win or lose in the quote-unquote fiscal disparities, um, game. Um, I call it a game because we are the only city metro area in the entire United States that uses fiscal disparities as a tax levy number, so.
Why are we the only ones who use it?
We also are one of the ones that have Met Council as well, so.
Minnesota, you meant.
Oh.
Minnesota, sorry. Minnesota, not us as the city.
Okay.
Us as a metro area-
Got it.
Of Minneapolis-St. Paul are the only metropolitan city areas that have, um, fiscal disparities.
Plays this one gambling game.
You got it.
Was it, I don't think it was originally, this was in the seventies, right?
Yes, it was roughly about the same time that Met Council was, was created.
It wasn't supposed to benefit big cities.
It was not supposed to benefit big cities.
So why don't they change it or get rid of it?
Really?
How do we change it and get rid of it?
You'll have fifty percent of the cities who love it and fifty percent who hate it, so. Which fifty percent would you like to be in? So, I do not know the answer to that, mayor. I will say that that is, if I could tell you the answer, I'd love to be able to, but.
Do we have any historical, like?
We will be a loser this year. I can guarantee it.
Okay.
So it's just depending on how much of a loser we are.
How much of a loser were we last year?
I cannot remember the number off the top of my, I think it was roughly a million dollars, eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, I'm trying, I don't remember.
That sounds right to me.
It was a big chunk.
And was it the same the previous year?
No.
Okay.
It was.
One of them years, we got sixteen percent.
Yes.
On that good side.
Yes, but that was-
About two or three years ago.
Two or three years ago, yep. And then we went backwards, because then we built the Cubes Building and Graco and Capital Partners Building, and when those came online, those then essentially got-
Because of the lag of, yeah.
Because the lag of taxes, they came behind us. So it, because the residential went in, if you put in a bunch of residential housing, you're a winner of the overall, I'm gonna call, again. Winners and losers should not be the term I use, I'd say that you benefit from the, from the, from the, uh, formula, but.
So residential benefit, the formula benefits residential-
Yes.
And it tends to punish? I don't know if that's even a, a good, better word.
Downgrade commercial development. I don't know how to use a better term. Like I said, if you looked at both sides of us, east side is Champlin, west side is Rogers. Rogers is a lot of commercial industrial. They are ultimate loser. Champlin is an ultimate winner.
Does, is Graco- Does the formula change-
No.
When the TIP districts expire?
No, it does not, but then we wouldn't be giving the money back to the developer, as in, I'll use Graco, only because they have two TIFs. Um, the money then would then go to the taxes and then come to us as a city, and then we'd be able to use that tax value to be able to put into the taxes, um, for the overall community. Right now, we give those tax, taxes back, and then we just give them right back to Graco for, um, essentially.
Graco TIF, or was it the Cubes TIF that we got spanked with last year?
Uh, Graco TIF.
Graco, so that means this year?
Should be none of them. They're all on, online now.
Graco's twenty-six or twenty-seven, do-
Twenty-eight.
Uh, when it's gonna be done?
One of them expires in twenty-six or twenty-seven.
Um, my guess is twenty-eight or twenty-nine will be the first one, yes. So the Cubes Building, we don't ever get hit with, because we are technically collecting those taxes every single year?
Oh, because of the way that-
Because we have the, we have the bond that goes on those TIFs. That's how we re, reconstructed, uh, West French Lake Road and the intersection at eighty-one.
Should've been worked into the formula when we figured that out, too.
Yes, we worked it into the formula, because we were, essentially, we collect the taxes on it a hundred percent, and then we utilize those dollars for the project overall. Essentially, we redid that roadway without causing any tax levy dollars for any other resident.
But when we did the Graco one, I don't think we were aware-
No, we were not.
That we were getting spanked for it.
That's correct.
Had that worked into the money, we probably would have chose differently, I think.
Probably, if we would have known that information, you may or may not have done a different decision at that time. But now you know, so now we can use it moving forward. Yeah, so my big three questions are priorities and goals, planning for the future, and what's gonna be the kind of deciding factor? This helps us as staff and myself specifically, so that I can provide good feedback to my department heads when they come to me and say, hey, this is what I like for budget next year, and I go, yep, that's great, or, yep, that's great.
Never gonna happen.
Yes, you got it.
Well.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be unanimous across the council, but.
Yeah. For, for, for me, I would like to see our capacity number. We would, us use the, the new capacity values. Um, I'd also like to know what our non-recurring spending was last year that we don't plan for. So, like pavement. It's, it's capital, but it's, it's a recurring thing, and we, we plan that. The equipment budget we had last year, it'd be nice to know, because that's not, that would be baked into the, to the budget if we didn't look at that.
Okay.
So. That's my spiel.
So essentially, capacity values, essentially, use that up. That would be your, kind of your, what do you wanna call it?
The new.
I'm gonna call your cap or whatever you wanna call it.
The new capacity, yeah.
Okay. And specifically, new capacity, not total.
New value capacity, yeah.
And by, by that number, you're talking seven seventy-seven, right?
No, that's the full capacity.
Yep, seven seventy-seven, which is the number I gave you in your packet, um, for information, is if one hundred percent of the new tax capacity numbers were utilized for tax levy, essentially, the tax rate stayed the same from year to year.
Say that again? The new is just the new.
Yep, so then if you used only new, then the tax rate would decrease next year.
Yeah.
So if you used seven seventy-seven as the number-
Six.
Six twelve would be the, I think it was six point three percent, six point three eight percent would be the new.
Something like that, yep. And again, it's not exactly one for one, but it's close.
Six, six point one three, I think it was.
Yeah.
So that's your, that's your number, six.
Yeah, and the overall capacity was eight.
Yeah, eight point one or something like that.
Eight point three, I think.
Eight point one.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you used all, I'll use the one, it's not technically one for one, but it's close enough, or eight point one percent of tax levy increase equals eight point one percent of tax capacity, means the tax rate stays the same if you use that formula I showed a couple of slides ago. Um, so that's kind of the general number. It doesn't mean it's exact, it's relative. But if you used the, only the new values, which is what the mayor had mentioned, then the tax rate would decrease, because if you have eight percent increase in capacity, but only six percent increase in the levy, now the tax rate would go down.
We have some, um, things that are, you know, that are built into, built into this for us. We've got, um, union contracts and-
Yep.
Health insurance payments and so forth that we, that we know are gonna go up.
Yes.
And can predict, maybe not so much on the health insurance piece of it, but, um, certainly where we have contract employees, we know what, you know, what they, what those costs are gonna change like, and what our, um, current, current levels of staffing will cost us going forward. So there's those kinds of things that will cause an increase. If we said, okay, last, last year's budget was great, um, what, what's our new spending? Then we would have to look at those things that have either inflation or a structured cost increase to them. And it'd be nice to know kind of what, well, I'll say, I don't want the tax rate to go up, so at a high level, that's, that's where I'm at. So if you look at, you know, what, what things are gonna drive the budget to need to increase from last year, you know, what's already sort of baked in that we don't really have the ability to debate. We can talk about capital equipment, we can talk about pavement management, and what we feel like we can afford to put into those, uh, those different parts of the funds, but, uh, some things we don't really have a, a choice about.
Sure.
And so it'd be nice to know where, you know, what that, what that sort of wheelroom is, and then, you know, and then we can get into the, kind of the, the needs or, um.
It wants.
This is the winners, losers, priorities, whatever you wanna use the word.
Where we usually get stuck. But before we do that, it'd be nice to know what we're already working with that, that has to be spent.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Go ahead.
Um, my-
Do you want a different slide up? Sorry, I don't know if I'm looking up here.
Oh, no, this is fine. Um, my gut instinct is I want to keep the tax rate the same, or maybe a little tiny bit lower. I'm not like, I'm not like, we have to lower it by five percent or anything like that, but like, I definitely don't want the tax rate to go up, and I would be happy if we could shave a teeny tiny bit off, that'd be great. Um, so to me, tax rate is, is my driver versus the levy. Um, as far as priorities, I agree with Dave, like, I, I definitely think we need to see what are the things that are totally outside of our control, right? Like, we have X number of employees, we know they're gonna get this pay increase, like, all that has to be accounted for, because we don't really have any, any say in that anyway. Um, not really, we do, but kind of, we do, we don't, but like, um, like, so the, I wanna have all those things earmarked out. Also, as the mayor said, I'd like to know, like, what are ongoing things versus what were the one-time projects that, like, particularly projects that happened before Stephanie and I had anything to do with anything, right? Um, so those are things that would, that would be of interest of me, or of interest to me. Um, I think the planning for the future, in my head, there are kind of, there's a couple of big things that are all kind of interwoven. Um, ultimately, I think we need to, as a city, take a bigger look at our transportation plan for the city, and I think that, depending on how that conversation goes, would definitely have me feeling like, okay, this is an intersection that we need to, like, prioritize, or, you know. So I think having that conversation would help me with this, would help me with this part of it. Um, I also think we need to finish out that conversation with our Parks Commission and the Three Rivers Park about that, what's going on with the River Trail. Um, you know, we're putting in the Water Trail, and in my mind, I would love to see a completed circuit from the, the boat launch in the Historic Village and the, at Elsie Stevens, and get a trail that connects those. That's a priority in my mind. Um, so I would like to, you know, think about where that falls, and if that's a priority for us, I don't think we can wait, because it sounds like Three Rivers is more kind of just waiting to see what happens with the road itself and like the state, county, I don't, is that a county road or a state road? Dayton River Road? It's county road. Um, and they have indicated that, like, that portion is not coming for quite a while. And so I don't think, in my mind, I don't think we can wait for them to, like, do that. I think we need to maybe be a little bit more in the driver's seat on that portion of the trail, so that we can connect up our Water Trail and have a really nice closed loop. Um, and so that would be, but that's a whole conversation we need to have before I can say, yes, it is a budget priority or not, And so that would be, but that's a whole conversation we need to have before I can say, yes, it is a budget priority or not, because if I'm the only person who feels that way and no one else does, well then, you know, whatever. But if, as a council, like, no, we think this is important, then, then that would move. So, um, those are things, the planning for the future, those are the big things, the, the overall transportation plan for the city and that little, that River Trail possible closed loop situation. Those are two things that are, are very important to me to have that conversation, to, to decide what that five, ten, or ten-year goals are. Also, just things I need to know more about that I'm not expecting to hear, but I just need to do my own homework on, is TIF districts in general. So, um, there's clearly a lot going on there, and I, I think, I just have, I have some things in my head that I need to work out before I can make any sort of educated comment on that.
Sure.
Was that, is that answering your question? So, okay.
Giving the direction, I appreciate it.
Fire away.
Who go first? You want me to go first?
Yeah.
I guess I would, I kind of sit in the same spot as Sarah. I don't know what my tipping point is at this point. Like, I don't know what is the, you know, is it, the pass is levy, like, I'm not there yet. Like, I need to, I think, digest a little bit more, too. The only thing that I guess, as we're talking about budgets, that I would like to start talking about, and this is kind of a loaded hot ticket item, so I'm gonna say what I'm gonna say and then we're gonna leave it alone. The other fire station, I'd like to talk about that, because I think we've got pushed to twenty thirty, thirty-one, somewhere out in there. And I guess I would just like to start talking about it now, because that's not that far away, and I have, you know, my own opinions about if that's the right amount of years out or not, but I guess if we're gonna be talking about, you know, things that are important to us or things that, planning for the future, if it is twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one, that's not that far out. Or sooner.
Sure. Anything else?
No, that's all I got.
Okay.
Spew.
I wanted to yell at it.
They say the best for last, huh?
Best for last.
Uh, well, my rock solid number will not be, it can't go over the eight percent. And I'd be anywhere from that six to eight, somewhere in there, some, somewhere in there, I'm fine with. It's gonna be tight. You guys are gonna suck up a couple hundred grand of that, just like, in a blink of an eye.
I think that happens regardless with unit contracts.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't have to, but, I mean.
It does, when the unit contracts have been approved.
You don't have to stay in there unless you fire people.
Back to arbitration, but I guarantee.
Unless you're gonna fire people, if we have employees and they're in a union and that contract is negotiated outside of us, then that.
Oh, that part, yeah.
That's, that's what I'm saying, like, that's, that's a hundred grand right there, or whatever it is.
Right. But there's another piece of it that is not part of the unit contract.
Sure.
We can talk about it. It'll, it'll get there.
That's it?
There's nothing good, nothing bad.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, if we can.
I will send this out on this week's weekly update, so you have more time to digest. If you need more information about something specific, like TIF districts is a great one, I can provide some information on TIF districts so that you're aware of them, maybe what we have right now, so you know what we have, what they look like, what they mean. We don't have all that many of them left. We still have, one, two, three, we have five currently, one, one comes off to this year or next year.
I thought the first Greco building came off in twenty-six.
So because the county screwed up that one year, we are a one-year behind leg. We paid the one year in advance or whatever to try to catch up to it, but I think it's twenty, it's either twenty-eight or twenty-nine. But it will be sooner than what they anticipated it, because the dollar amount that we have set on a square foot basis for that building was significantly less than what actually it was valued at when the county came and evaluated. And so that means that they get, they have to pay more taxes in, but that means that their, I'm gonna call it, their loan that we have to give them is paid back that much quicker.
Right.
So I think it's twenty-eight or twenty-nine on the first one. The second one is like.
Six and thirty is what I thought it was.
It's not twenty-six and thirty, and it's, there is a lag there as well, so you have to remember that, right now, we're working on twenty-six as levy. If we didn't get the first tax payment until twenty-four, and it's even a nine-year TIF, that's typically how those economic development TIFs work. If it's paid off in five years, that's still twenty-twenty-nine, if it didn't come on till twenty-four. But again, we approved it in twenty-two, maybe. So there's just, there's a two-year lag, and it seems odd when we approve something and then it doesn't go on the levy for two years, it seems weird, so.
Does Silver's have a, when, you know, when he's come in and talked about TIF before, but I'm wondering if he just has some sort of slide deck that these guys could get, just.
That's what I was gonna probably send some out. Jason has a bunch of things from, Arshol, Melers, and then he also has the bond, or whatever you call it, the loan schedules, and I could send those out to you guys if you really want those, to say, here's when the plan's gonna be or whatever, based on.
All the ones are outstanding?
Yeah.
Oh.
So that's what, that's how we pay him, is based on the loan that comes in and what the percentage of interest was that we agreed upon and how many years and.
That might be nice to know.
Yeah, there's only one that's gonna last a long time, and that's the Sands Building over here on Balsam. Just because that's a housing one, those are twenty-six-year TIFs.
Is there anything that you have, you know, this year, we had a tax capacity increase of eight point one percent. And I know you've done projections, which is as good as they can be, but what's coming over the next four or five years?
Well, with new growth this year, you've seen a quick trip go up, that'll add some value to the city overall. You're seeing that Opus got built this year, so there was, there's gonna be a percentage in twenty-six based on that building being so far through twenty-twenty-six, but then now being finished as of today. I believe Turbine Prose is moving in here sorely, if not moved in already. That'll be fully on the books in twenty-twenty-seven. So they evaluate on January second of every year, and depending on what happens in growth, that's what it'll be for the next year's following budget year. So just based on those two things alone, there's probably a couple percentage points of increase there from those two. With a TIF district, I can't remember if that goes off this year or next year, but either way, it'll be off in twenty-seven. And I have to look again to see, that'll be a couple percentage points. I think that's Prologis, which is the Spears Manufacturing Building, right by Greco, across the street from Greco, it's a one-off building on French Lake. But most of them are also going to be housing as well, so we have, still have quite a few housing stock left open. There's still quite a few lots available. As those houses go in, then they come in on the tax roll in twenty-twenty-seven. Anything you'll see constructed at the moment or whatever. DCM Farms will come in here pretty quickly for a final plat, that's why I was on that weekly update this week. And if they can get moving, they're gonna plat a hundred, and I'm looking at John here, a hundred and how many, a hundred and eighty?
Fifty-three.
Hundred and fifty-three platted lots is what they want to do the first round, essentially the whole east half, or west half, sorry, of that property, they want to plat. And if they do that, they're gonna be putting homes right away, essentially. So if you think of those things, those are gonna be going in, and those will have some partial value, so. I would assume we're going to see a ten percent increase almost every year. I was surprised it was only at eight percent this year, to be honest with you. I'm assuming ten percent every year. I'm also putting in projected numbers of fiscal disparities to be very conservative now, because I don't want to get in the same boat we were at last year, where we're cutting tax levy to get to the end numbers. But I'm going to guess ten percent is probably a fair estimate to see for the next few years, is my guess.
No big dips or?
I don't see any big dips unless there's some sort of huge market crash, which I don't see happening, and from all of my professionals that I talk to, none of them see a huge market crash, specifically within housing or commercial, seems to be pretty steady. The only things that could be, you know, increases with, you know, Greco's TIF come off, comes off, that's a big win for the city in quotes, because those dollars then go back to us instead of having to go right back to Greco themselves. No, I don't see any major ones. Still have some talks with CRG in the Cubes Building to try to fill out the, fill out the rest of the half of that building, so that hasn't been touched yet in total valuation, so that'll be an increase when that gets fulfilled.
You think that'll?
So it increases, once you get capacity in there, the square foot dollar, per dollar square foot that the county uses goes up. It increases based on being occupied.
So a used warehouse is better than an empty warehouse?
That's correct. They set a base value, here's what it is per square foot, I'll use the number fifty, and I, I don't know the story number, I just threw a number out there. But if it's occupied now, if it's, depends on what it is, and occupied, you know, occupied with a bunch of manufactured equipment that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, it might be now, you know, seventy bucks a square foot. If it's biomedical, maybe it's eighty or eighty-five dollars a square foot, versus if it's just distribution, then it's just pallet racking and, and equipment, so now it's, you know, fifty-five dollars a square foot or something. But if it's occupied, it always brings in a larger value than if it's not occupied. I would agree with you.
It's just the pattern.
It's just the pattern that I see from the county.
I did, if we're thinking about the planning for the future, the five or ten-year goals, two other things that I want to, I don't have answers for, but thinking on water, water towers, I know I need a lot, I have to learn a lot more, and I have a, a meeting scheduled with Marty to, so he can catch me up to speed on that. But also the Historic Village, if there are any, what are the plans? I mean, I've seen in our twenty forty comprehensive plan, right, like, there's that, but yet how do we?
That's for development?
Well, then, how do we get from where we are to that plan, right? Like, and, we don't, exactly, so then.
Which plan?
That's just, so that's where I also, I need to, I don't have an answer, but I want to think more about that. When we're talking, when you're asking about five to ten-year plans, I think that is, in my head, particularly, I really think this, this Water Trail loop could be a way to really be an impetus to rethink about the Historic Village, and a way to get, like, traffic, get people to come there from outside, from within our own city, but from outsider city, and what would that mean if we're drawing in traffic to the Historic Village, how can we, like, you know, get them to spend money here before they get in their kayak? And then get them to spend some more money after they drop their bike back off, right? Like, what are ways we can, like, how can we do that? And I think this is the chance, really, to really think about that and, and be ready for when that, that happens, so.
It's gonna be a large conversation.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that's why, but you, you did, you did ask.
I appreciate that, that's true.
I'm answering your question, so.
I do appreciate that. It's just, just as a quick context, the biggest thing that we have as constructors on there is not space, it is sewer capacity and water capacity.
Yes.
And so I think everyone is aware of those things, but I think just some general information from engineering would be good to be shared again, because I know it's been done at least once.
Okay.
Just some high-level stuff, so.
Yeah, well, that's just, if you can just give it to me so I can read it, like, we don't necessarily have to have a whole council thing about it, but if I could get caught up to speed on that, that would help me give better answers.
I love it, sounds great.
You did?
I'm good to go. Thank you so much.
All right. Item Q.
I'll leave it up there for you, Scott.
I like it.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
You took that tree down.
Tonight, we're, we're talking about the, the public infrastructure related to the Parkway Neighborhood Development in Southwest Dayton. And the council's probably familiar with this project located in the far southwest corner of the city, on the, I'll call it the west side of ninety-four, as indicated on the screen. And just a closer look, this is a little bit dated, but this is a concept of the overall site layout for the development, just to get the, get a visual of it. Little bit about this project, there's significant infrastructure, public infrastructure needed to extend to, to support this development. And it includes infrastructure extensions, mainly sewer and roadway extensions that are beyond the extents of the development. So just showing here on the screen, the, the colored background, if you will, is the proposed development area, which does include a section of the City of Dayton owned property, as shown and indicated by orange, as well as a short piece that is to be extended through property owned by the Shani Group, which is better known as the Dayton Creek Edition that's been in front of you and, and proposed as a development. The typical process for these situations is that the developer builds what they need to support their development. In this case, the developer has requested assistance with the infrastructure, being that there's such a large extent of it outside of their plat boundary. And because of that, the city is considering contracting and constructing those off-site improvements to work with the developer. So again, back to the depiction of it, the, the red circle, basically, the extension through the, I'll say, the Shani Group property or Dayton Creek Edition, as well as through the city-owned property, and then from that point, it would be extended through the Dayton Parkway Neighborhood project itself. So how the project could move forward is we would obtain site and design information available for this segment. The developer has had engineers working on the design, it's actually quite a ways along. So we would get, or we're in process of getting actually those design files, so they could be used to create city-owned documents that could be used for, for the construction. We do anticipate some additional information being needed, there's some soil-borne information for missing, and a little bit of topography survey that we would need for the final design, so we would collect that information, but then complete the final design and prepare the construction documents, the plans and specifications for obtaining a contractor bids, and then bid the project publicly, per statute requirements, and construct it under a city contract. So anticipated costs, we remain to only have a high-level cost estimate of these projects based on what the developer has, has put together to date. We have gone through, and it does seem like the numbers are reasonable for the work that's being included. Just to show a rough breakdown of this, this does include, they had about two million for the construction of it, and then our contract as proposed is two hundred and four thousand. Hopefully, that comes down if we're able to obtain as much of the design that's already been completed, as we're, we're hoping we can, that number should drop from there. There is significant wetland mitigations on this project to the, I think it's like five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the mitigation credit for that road extension through the city parcel, and then there would be other indirect costs for testing legal and, and other, they're just estimated at fifty thousand. So our recommendations would be to move forward with the engineering services to take this on as a city project and, and move towards putting together the, the bidding documents necessary. We would continue to coordinate with the adjacent property owner for access to the property. As mentioned, it does go through land owned and controlled by the Shani Group, so we'd work with them for land rights such that information could be collected for the design, as well as access to the property for construction of the actual improvements. And then complete the wetland mitigations as necessary. I will note that all of the permitting is in place, including with the Army Corps, which is a, a big step. It's just the mitigation would have to, have to be satisfied, in other words, payment for the credits when the project is to take place. And then our thought is that we would target a spring twenty twenty-six design. I think it would be quite challenging to get anything sooner than that. Maybe we could get things in place late summer to allow some of the grading to occur yet this fall or early winter, but that might be wishful thinking. Again, it'll depend on how much information we're able to obtain and just how far along it is, so. With that, if there's any questions?
Was that, that target date, is that consistent with the developer?
I don't know if it's been shared with him or not, he.
I'm trying to remember what he said.
I, I get the sense that he wants to go last year. But I, yeah, I just, I don't think it's realistic having to transfer everything over to, to the city project, and I'm not sure what the communications have been directly with the developer.
Mayor, Council, I've communicated with the developer multiple times that it will be a twenty twenty-six project for us, just so that you're aware. He's liking to go as soon as possible, right? I mean, it makes complete sense to us, but we've, I've told him multiple times that it will be a twenty twenty-six project. If we can get something done, sure, in the fall, maybe some sort of construction road or something like that, that's what they can.
Last five or something.
Yeah, something to get to get in there, sure, but at some point, we're gonna have to shut down the road to construct it, so at some point, he's gonna have to find alternate means to get into the site, so. It has been shared with the developer multiple times.
So can you talk more about the, the snag with the Shani piece?
Yes.
I can, but I'm gonna lower.
So there, as it sits, that is not platted, so there is not existing easement nor right-of-way. I'll go back to the figure just so it's a depiction of it, so the yellow piece. There is not existing land rights, there's no public granted or city granted easement over that. There, there probably is a limited easement for drainage and utility, because there is sanitary sewer that's installed up to a location. However, that's not intended for access or other purposes. As of now, the, the Shani Group representative has not indicated that they would be willing to give access to the property.
Would you characterize it as that, or would you say they specifically said we couldn't?
No. It, it's as simple as an easement agreement for access, or even a right of entry to collect information, which we haven't talked specifically about a right of entry to suffice for the design portion. We've just talked about permanent access, such we could construct the actual improvements.
So from the communication, I got the impression that they knew we needed this and they were gonna sit on it.
Oh, they know we need it, and they have removed this section from their final plat for their first edition.
Lynch tells me they've said, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding what their motivation would be on this. It's the only access to the north side of their property as well, is that correct? That there, there wouldn't be another one further to the west or whichever direction that is.
North, sorry, north of Dayton Parkway or?
On their south side, this is, still on the south side, but to theirs.
Where you have the yellow, that's on the Shani property, which continues on then to.
Dayton Creek also needs the yellow constructed to gain access for their property, is that, yes, that's, that's for sure, that is their only access.
They don't need it today or tomorrow.
And in looking at it physically, it's not something we can shift over to the right because of the way the islands and the whole intersection.
How the intersection was laid, which was dictated by, or determined in conjunction with Elsie, the head of the county.
So it just seems like this, you know, there's already a curb cut there, it's, I don't know how this can be a surprise to anybody, but that's where it's gonna go, so I, I'm struggling with why, why now are they saying that we're not interested in, in doing this?
It kind of frustrates me, too, how did, I mean, it seems like we, we should have had a little bit of control of this piece. How did, I mean, it seems like we should have had a little bit of control of this piece before we, I mean, we seem pretty deep into this other project, and then we get surprised by this.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we had been working with the developer on the Rogue Bird parcel for many months and let him know that we do not have access to that. He had had conversations with the Shainey representative and had, sounded like they were very positive, from my understanding, to be able to gain that access point. So we did not worry about it based on the fact we said this is a developer issue that needs to be worked out with another developer issue, and they'll figure it out. And it sounded like the conversations were positive in that aspect. So city staff did not bring this to light, or guess, bring it to attention to council, because we had every intention to move forward with this based on what we had heard. And that changed as soon as it became a city project, I guess, is kind of when it changed or roughly when development was going on, or I don't know exactly what approvals.
Yeah, our anticipation was always that the Shainey project would go first, or they would at least go so close together that the plats would essentially both be finalized and recorded prior to construction on either, and this would be a non-issue. Earlier conversations with the Shainey Group, there was indication that, sure, build the road, then I don't have to, those types of things. That has since changed. And again, they were also attempting to plat both north and south of Dayton Parkway. That changed actually very recently. I'd only be speculating if I tried to give reasons for it, and I haven't had any success hearing a justification from the developer.
So, I mean, I don't know, again, you know, what the motivation is, but has there been any maybe discussion about swapping? So we have land on the west side there, and it seems like it's a lot of property. And I'm wondering, I'm guessing it's intended for ponding, but I don't know what the point of that property is. But is there any way we could negotiate?
It's all low and wet and hard to use, so.
Is it?
Yeah.
It doesn't come up as wetland on the?
Yeah, it doesn't look.
On the wetland.
All the darker green is actually wetland area on there. It's significant. Yeah, if you're looking at the county, that's the national wetland inventory. That's their best guess.
Okay.
And I should stop saying this, but I usually say it's generally pretty accurate. However, on this project, not only are the wetlands off quite a bit, the floodplain's off quite a bit as well, which is.
Oh, okay.
Non-typical. I usually find those to be generally representative as well.
Being farmed.
Yeah, so I don't think that it would be much value, I guess, maybe for some ponding, but I think it'd be pretty limited.
I guess if we get even farther into this by doing all the pre-work. I don't know. Seems like.
Well, it's, it has me scratching my head where this thing kind of fell off the rails, but.
Yeah.
The Parkway Neighborhood Project doesn't happen without a road. We've agreed to build the road. On property we don't own, and how do we get past that?
And there's no, do we carry liability here that we approve this project and say we build a road, that we give them? I know you're not a lawyer.
Definitely not. I don't know the answer to that.
An easy answer to that? Okay.
I mean, at least as far as my involvement, I haven't been part of anything that would be misleading as far as suggesting there's there, but I, your point is taken as well. I just, I don't know the answer from a legal standpoint.
I'm confused in this whole project. When we say Shainey, I'm thinking North Island Lake Road.
Oh, yeah.
It's a 105-acre piece.
So it's the same owner. It's the Shainey Group is the property owner, and I should be saying Dayton Creek, because that's the development application in front of us regarding that. So it's just been Shainey since 2014, when we started buying right-of-way for the interchange, so.
Know where I am, I guess.
It's the yellow right on the side, so it's.
Yeah. This is the Parkway Neighborhood, the apartment buildings.
Yes.
Yes.
And this is that little piece of ground that's probably, it'd be northwest of that, right along.
Yep.
Right along the, right along the, what's the little?
Near Brockton.
Brockton's just to the west.
Brockton and the interchange.
Yep.
It's right on that corner.
Should I go to an overall aerial, would that help?
Yeah, that might help.
So they go to your right there.
Yeah, so the highlighted blue is the Parkway Neighborhood.
That's our portion there.
And then.
And then that's this piece.
That notched area is the city-owned parcel, that's right. And then the Dayton, or sorry, Dayton Creek Edition is west of that. That goes all the way to Brockton.
Oh, okay, yep, yep. And the apartment building, that $5 million, I think it was $5 million bucks to build that road for the apartment building, right?
I was thinking six, but yeah.
Something in that area.
Yep.
And now we approved that apartment building, but we don't have any road going to it.
That is correct.
Part of that approval, the expectation, and I think the direction was still that the developer would build all of the infrastructure, including all the way out to Dayton Parkway.
Well, this sure is a badass way of doing it.
Well, I just also don't understand why we're not asking the Dayton Creek Edition, is that the name that we're going by?
Yes, yeah.
The Dayton Creek Edition to pay anything?
No.
No, and they will need this when they develop.
What about the lights, are we asking for them to?
Nope, not anymore. They'll see that on item.
I did see that.
So I just.
Why was that? Just as in negotiating?
I was trying to.
We were just trying to be nice, basically. We're trying to be, like, reasonable, and I just, it blows my mind that I, if I'm sitting here going like, here's the stuff, I would like to develop it, I know I'm going to need a road, I know I'm going to need a stoplight, and, you know, maybe two, three years ago, the thought was I would have to chip in for all or part of it, and now suddenly it's all going to happen for me for free, I have to do literally nothing, but now I'm going to say no just because. That does not.
There's a because.
Well, I'm sure there's a because, but not a because that apparently we can be told.
Huh?
But like, that just, that doesn't.
Give him nothing.
Yeah, that doesn't give me warm fuzzies, I'll say that. And so I believe, and I just.
I don't know where we go from here. You're thinking we should still crawl forward and lay out.
I guess, a question I have, is there a way to force the issue and get the land that we need for the road?
I, again, not, I'll preface with, I am not a lawyer.
You are not a lawyer.
I, we've discussed somewhat with staff, and it seems that eminent domain would be an option here. It can't be used for development purposes, however, if this was viewed as reasons for public utilities and access that, and again, we have not reviewed this with an attorney, so I don't, I don't know this to necessarily be true, but we think that could be an option in which case it is, if you will, forced to be acquired that way.
Is that something that Amy could give us guidance on, or is it somebody at her firm?
Amy or somebody at Campbell Coons, she most certainly could give us guidance on that, if that is something the council would like to do. Now, again, I want to preface that I know the council's direction on eminent domain and the word around that. I think it means something differently here, where it's not so much like a taking, like we're just taking it just to take it. This is a, this helps everybody involved, this isn't like, it's just a, so it's totally different than.
And based on the curb cut, it was planned.
It's planned, and it was in their preliminary plat discussion with the developer when they came in and did the preliminary plat on their development, they had it platted as right-of-way.
And it would be reversed for the value of it, it's just.
Yes.
Do you want to go there, and there's other issues?
Again, I'm not, I'm just trying to provide, like, this is maybe slightly different on the fact of that process, that you normally would see it as so much of a takings, because they had already told us they're going to do that.
And we made plans accordingly.
Yes.
Like, you had conversations with lots of people, and in all of those conversations, you said, yes, we're going to do this, yes, we're going to do this, yes, we're going to do this, and suddenly, no, we're not going to do this. Like, that is a very different situation to me than someone who said no all along, and then we're like, well, we're going to do it anyway, and we're going to take it. Like, those two scenarios are very different in my mind, and I don't think they should be comparable.
Well, when do, when do they want to develop this? When do they want to do something?
Which one?
The Diamond.
The Creek Edition?
The Diamond.
The Diamond.
Well, they modified, they were doing the final plat for just the infrastructure, and that's been before you. Their final plat was going to be the infrastructure, which means roads, utility extensions, stormwater, both north and south. They revised their application to just leave an outlot on the south half and only final plat the north. That's why the land doesn't get, so they're looking at moving forward with the north sometime soon.
And that was only recently that change happened?
That was the spring.
Yeah, maybe two months ago? So everything up to two months ago was?
The engineers have been working together, the developers have been communicating, we've been communicating with them. The plan was always.
Let's not allow them to do anything.
Sure.
I mean, do we have the, we can play poker, too.
We can.
Do it legally, but yeah.
Yeah. Again, yeah, so city staff's been operating for two years, based on all the information we have provided to the council, that everything was going in the right direction, and then two months ago, it got changed.
Yep.
Were there, and I think.
I use two months ago as a time of reference, doesn't mean it's exactly two months ago, but.
Have they given any sort of, give us this, and then you can do it?
On the north side?
No, no.
What do you mean?
Okay.
Yeah, you can't.
I mean, there hasn't, as far, best of my knowledge, there hasn't been any requests or this, this is why, or this is what we need or anything.
And what you would need to go forward, you think that you can get the bulk of it done without going on the?
For the design? It would be a lot better if we could get on the property.
Sure.
We're, if they'll share design files, yes, it'll be easy to fill that gap. It's not a, it's like 180 feet, so it's not a significant area.
It's my front yard, but.
I mean, and we can get everything in the right-of-way, and we can get everything, obviously, on the city parcel, we just can't get between the two of them. So we, you know, we would, we'd be more comfortable if we could get on the site to verify things with the design, but we could probably piece together what's needed, just using readily available info. And, I mean, maybe they'd be willing to share design files, they haven't as of yet, but.
What about, like, do you need to do soil borings or things like that?
You know, probably both sides is sufficient. Part of the, part of the area we need more is on the city parcel.
You can just say they're shitty soil right off the bat. It's going to be that way anyway.
There's been soil borings out there, we just want some more specific ones in certain areas, so.
Well, it'd be nice to get information from Amy as far as what our options are on that. I know that there's, it's not just as simple as that, but still.
That's why it was in my weekly update, because I knew it would take some thought process by the end of this, isn't a simple decision, nor has it been a simple decision that the city staff's worked through, obviously, it's been.
And it would be nice if we could get a response from them saying, what's, what's up?
Sure.
Are we going to get access to this or not? I don't know. Because it does seem like we've so far bent over backwards, but depending, it's.
I mean, it's kind of two, I know they're related, but it's kind of two different questions. The question we're deciding on tonight is do we want you to move forward with the design work?
Yep.
We also need to solve for what do we do about the property we don't own. And I would agree, I think we would like to know what our options are, you know, certainly from the attorney and other leverage we may have, but I would also really like to understand what changed for them. I mean, there's some reason they're just saying, no, we're not, we're not interested anymore, we're going to only focus on the other side of the street. I mean, there, maybe there's some economics that go with that, too, but it just seems a little bit like we're going to pick up our ball and go home here, and I would, I would like them to have the opportunity to say why they're doing that.
Particularly because, from our perspective, nothing has changed.
It's only been to the positive for the developer since the whole conversation has started.
Yeah, like, it's only ever been adding better, 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 better. So it's not like it's changed to the, now we're adding more to your bill, and now we want you to chip in. Like, then I could get it, right? If it was like, suddenly, then I could, I could get why you're like, you know what? No, I'm taking my ball home. But like, we brought everything else, and for them to say no suddenly without explanation, that's, I'm struggling with that, I'm going to be honest, so.
I think I also kind of struggle with the fact that we're not looking at any liability for the lights, because I have a feeling that's going to be a significant contributor to their traffic. And we were just talking about that to the south side.
It's essentially all of the contributors. These are two dead-end roads to service area, it's the only access, so all of the benefits.
Right, so it's the Parkway Neighborhood, it's the southern property, so now we didn't do that for the northern property, did we? Or we, we just said not at all for anything?
Yep.
Oh, we should reset that.
Well, if they're not going to play ball, then we're not playing ball. Like, this is apparently a two-ball ballgame, and they decided to take theirs home, well then we'll take ours home, like, come on.
Yeah, we probably should get more information from Amy, and then it would be nice to hear from them what's going on. Because maybe there's some other thing going on that they just haven't shared with us.
Sure.
I mean, right now, we're kind of coming down on them, and maybe there's something else going on, but.
Well, that's, yeah, from what we know, it seems like we have done nothing but be nice to them, so that's why I'm just curious about where this suddenly came from. So, and I'm assuming there is a reason, we just don't know what it is.
Well, I think the reason is, is if they're hoping that somebody else pays for the whole thing.
We are, that's, it's already happening. We are paying for the whole thing.
Not yet, we're not doing it.
Well, if they say no, we're not doing it, that's why, that's why I'm so confused. If they say yes, then they are not paying for any of it.
Right, no, I get that part.
So why would you say no?
Why would I say no?
Why, that's, why, why on earth would someone say no to this? I just do not understand.
I can think of a few. So what do you, would, are we still suggesting we go forward with?
I think we.
We, I mean, we could go forward, you could, you could approve it, I mean, you could, to be honest, I mean, you could condition it formally or informally, if you want a hold for some other answer is fine. I mean, or postpone, we're not, I mean, we are looking at a 2026, we would like to get going on it, but there's not an urgency necessarily.
If we move it out, let's say we move your work out two months, does that impact the delivery plan?
Probably not, it'd be nice to, it'd be nice to do it earlier, if we could get things done to allow some to occur over the winter, but again, it, yeah, I mean, if authorization is given, you know, maybe, just throwing it out, conditioned on you would like to hear from the adjacent property owner on why this is, or what would it take to, to gain the land, for example? If you would like some assurance, if you will, before dollars are actually expended on the effort, I mean, that would be fine, too, or table the item.
Table the item, and maybe in, maybe in a month, you'll have some more answers.
I still think the design work needs to happen.
It still needs to happen, and, and again, this is another case where it'll probably keep, right?
It will, I will point out, because I do see, and albeit, I think slight, some potential risk that if, if the design work is done, but progress is not made on land rights, the project doesn't happen, heaven forbid the development falls apart or other, or maybe it's the same development, but then it reverts back and the developer's going to build the whole project now you spent money on further design, that's not necessary, if you're following that. I don't, again, I don't know if that would be a significant risk or not, I'm not trying to suggest it's likely to happen, but there is that off chance that the city develops plans and they don't get to get used, and then a new development comes in and the city does not offer to build the road, and instead it falls back on the developer.
Yeah, I think we should table it for now. I just thought of something else, too, but.
Do you?
I'll talk offline on that.
You need?
So you need a motion for tabling, then?
I'll make a motion to table it. I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion in a second.
We have enough direction to staff as well to figure out one time to bring it back, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, Jason said he's got a couple, a couple months yet, so I mean.
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, it's tabled for...
Thank you.
Q. A tomorrow.
Wish I had a money tree on this one. So this is the approval of 113th Avenue, East French Lake Road, concept plans. So in March, I believe it was March, the council reviewed a concept plan by Opodin for an industrial project. There were questions about, that was raised on the road alignment, whether it should be the extension of 113th versus a new road that would go through the Opodin project. The council elected to adopt a six-month moratorium, so this runs from April through October, and this would allow the city to conduct a study for both road corridors as well as land use. And so this proposal before you tonight is to develop a concept plan. Stantec, who's... Would complete this, is proposing, I'm gonna say, task one is to complete two concept plans, and then to revise that into a third plan, or combine... Combination into a third plan. The total cost for this is $15,300. This would be completed this summer.
And there is money in the budget for something like this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We've... We have money budget for unanticipated plans, I'll say, or studies.
So would this plan be based on the current land use that we have defined?
It's a start.
Because we know it's all wrong, right?
I...
Well, I mean, just...
I mean, it's... Yes, the council can determine it's all wrong. So the comp plan assumes that we have the X, which we don't have.
Well, no, the problem with this area was, we didn't do this, we did this. It wasn't the X.
So we can, as a pre-starter, we could send out this map blank with each council member, and you guys could each fill in your kind of areas of what you feel is best for land use in this area by coloring it, coloring map, and then that's something we can use as a starting point, because...
I can have my grandkids help me.
Sounds great. Otherwise, we have to start with somewhere, so that's why it's either we have it, everybody draw their own, and we can kind of mash them together, or we can say, "Here's what we have right now, adjust." Could start with something, so that's why... If the current one is all wrong, then do we want to start with that? I mean, that's...
Well, on the flip side, the current one, there are some things that are already there that we can't.
Yes.
So some things are just done.
Yeah, and when I say all wrong, what I mean is that swooped it, we were gonna do, had commercial alongside of it. So I guess I don't know what it looks like now, but I'm pretty sure that at least those north areas have commercial, and it doesn't necessarily make sense.
I'm pretty sure whatever we come up with is going to be drastically different than what's in the comp plan.
Yeah.
I think we need to get started.
Yeah.
Put a moratorium on it a month ago, and intent was to...
To do this.
Make this make more sense.
Yeah. And it's also kind of a test case, I guess, before we get into the larger... This is a critical area, because it's where residential and industrial meet up, right? Like, so it is a tricky spot in the city. Also, there's... We have the bigger 2050 plan coming, and this is kind of a chance to... A mini-case of practicing some of the things and figuring out how that looks on a small scale. And so I think it's worth it, and I'm... I think this is... I think this will benefit the city in many ways, beyond the project, beyond the benefit we'll get just from this part of the city. I think it will be helpful, what we learn from this process will be applicable in other parts of the city and other projects we have. So I think it's worth it.
And the primary goal here was to figure out roads?
Roads and land use.
We've had pretty limited direction. Part of it is figure out the roads, so you know what to put in for land use, but as an engineer, I argue, what do you want to use the land for? I'll tell you what you need for roads. So it's gonna have to be a collective effort, if you will, so there'll have to be directions on both ends of it, I suppose, to lay those out, which we can do through an iterative process.
Well, and so part of me is like, I hear what you're saying, that like, we tell you what to do, you can make the roads happen. But on the flip side, some things have already been put there. So like, it's not like we have infinite...
You have constraints, of course.
Yeah. So like, we have some constraints. So within those constraints, I feel like if you could be like, you know, I do see like there's the back and forth. So within these constraints, I feel like there's probably edges of like... And also, there are... You can't just put a road anywhere.
Right.
So like, what are like the most reasonable places for roads to go? And then the land... To me, then you're like, okay, you could either go option A or option B for roads, and then, to me, the land use would come next, and then we'd go back to the final option for roads. That's how my brain would process this.
That was the thought process between the two layouts, is you would have some different splits in the land use, and then have a couple different road configurations, and mix and match, if you will.
Yeah, and then we could look at that and give you feedback, and then, yeah, so... That seems like a reasonable process to me as well.
Mr. Mayor, we do have comment from the audience, if you'd like to hear.
Come on up. Bill Ramsey, Ramsey Valley, 2117 Avenue. Five years ago, we purchased a property on 114th, East French Lake Road, in a current growth zone guided as medium density. When the moratorium came up, my friends asked, "What did you think of that?" I said, "Well, this is the first time in my career." I think it was a really good thing. Unique facts, different options that you can look at. And so, backing up a little bit, three years ago, I met with some of the neighbors to my east, and I said, "Look, it's on medium density, I'm not in a rush, I want to look and see how this, the roadways tie in, make sure that what we present, which we could have presented for your guidance and approval or denial, three, four years ago, we waited. We have delineated the wetlands, which would be a benefit to Stantec. We know existing roadways that we've laid out as a buffer between industrial or business park to our west, and we thought, okay, we'll just keep waiting." A year and a half ago, I had sent a letter, because there was a previous proposal on the Opodin site, and I sent the letter to the staff, and I said, "Look, we want to be involved with this. We want to make sure that what we do corresponds and designs properly with what's happening. It's important." I met with staff on site, I shared these concepts with some of the staff, and said, "Look, these are some of the thoughts that we have." And so, when I go through and I look at these different variables, just being open and not in a rush, I look at that comp plan it showed, an existing roadway running east-west up to Opodin site, and then north to south. And what I look at is that, there's a reason for that, is that if you look at extending 113th Avenue on those plans, those delineated wetlands are a massive amount at the end of 113th. So the cost to try to bring that across and mitigate on my parcel, which is 15 acres, two acres which is wetland, and bring the road going back to when the moratorium went on, there was two bubble designs. One that came through the eastern side of my property is about three acres. So when I look at it, I think, okay, would we really want to, you know, taking out the cost of all of it, I say, as a community, as a city, do we really want to bring industrial traffic down to French Lake, East French Lake Road? My opinion is no. And so, I'm not an industrial designer, but I've seen enough of it, that what I look at is that, if you look to the west, what we show off of the plan, it's medium density, is all currently business park on the comp plan. Myself, I thought the road that Opodin should have been constructing on their East property line would have came down and stopped short of French Lake Road, the width of the building. Your employee parking would have pulled in off of French Lake Road, and your truck traffic would have been on the backside. The next building to the west would have been reversed, where its truck traffic would have backed up the same to the building that is on French Lake Road. I hope that makes sense to you. And their employee parking would have been on the west side. And then on 117th, your building would have been facing, parallel to 117th, with employee parking there and the truck traffic in the back. That's what I see as a land developer, from Plymouth to Maple Grove to Woodbury, that you try to keep that truck traffic controlled within there and not bring it out to residential areas. And so, my request tonight is that you have different variables, that I think, once you're given all the different facts, you'll make the right decision. When we looked at, you just had looked at what Graco pays, what your payments back, just sharing the funds of tax base. If you take industrial versus median density, they're not that far apart. When I look at what land is in Dayton, that's in the Maple Grove School District, this land is, and it's a variable that needs to be considered. And that's one of the reasons that I acquired the property. It's a sought-after school district that helps roam to other buildings and that are coming, of where their employees are gonna work and want to live and send us kids to school. And so, I would like to know, we have did baseline reports on all the different boundaries of the property, the wetland delineation, and I think that would be an asset to Stantec to present to you different variables. In saying that, I think that to try to bring truck traffic, industrial truck traffic down to French Lake is a mistake, and we would like to be involved in the process going forward, and that was what I'd like to tell you tonight. Stand for any questions that you may have. When you look at that plan of median density, I'm only 15 acres of it. We've coordinated with landowners to the east of us and did a design. They would come in independently. So it's not all my development there. Eighty-four of those units are on the 15 acres that I've laid out. We've calculated storm ponding, wetlands, and road design, and we thought we were buffering up against proposed future industrial or business park to our west. And so, the discussions that are about to happen over the months to come, we'd like to be involved with that.
This is very helpful.
Those are for you to keep.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so first step here is, you're thinking that we need to first figure out, in this area, what land use is, in order to have Jason go forward?
Land use and road corridor, they go hand in hand.
Well, I'm assuming you want land use first?
I mean, we can lay out some schematic... Which we've done, some schematic road connections. I mean, there's not a lot of options. I mean, a lot of the roads are in place.
Right.
But as far as connections, I mean, to what was just shared, the connections change the roads, or the land use changes the connections, which changes the roads. Basically, where do you want to transition from one use to another, I guess, is the key part. I mean, we can put... Certainly put drawings together on the road connections, but again, they would change with a change in land use, most likely, so...
It would be nice to know if there's any sort of no-go is in terms of where a road could be. You know, we think, okay, this land use makes great sense, and we want the road here, and then you say, no, that's a swamp.
And as councilman under Van Asser, there's not a lot of options left, right? I mean, you have road set, you have a big wetland in the middle. You know, we're thinking one of two east-west connections. Whether or not that connects to East French Lake Road, probably depends on what you're doing with the land. But that's it. Probably the bigger variable is, is there an additional north-south road? And again, if you're gonna have a consistent land through... Land use throughout, you probably don't want a public road going through there. Maybe you do, but probably not. But if you want to use that as a buffer, a transition from one use to, say, residential, to limit your access, maybe you want to introduce that road. But again, we don't know until there's a land use determined, so...
My question... So I have a question for the mayor, council, and then for Jason. So could the mayor and council put together their each individual land use plan, then you put together a roadway plan based on those land uses, and we can share all those together? That way we... Because there's only so many road uses that will work in the area.
Yeah.
And so my thought is, okay, if every individual council member has a different idea for the land use, could Jason's team put together a road system based on your land use, and then we can use them as options? And we can see which ones work best and which ones don't work best? I mean, I don't know the best way to move forward, because it's a small area in total, it's not the city, so it's not a huge area, but...
I don't either. It's just, like, what Dave suggested might be handy, too, because my understanding is, you know, there is some wetlands problems extending 113th. And I know we didn't go up with utilities, we kind of bailed on, to some extent, on going up the edge of those properties on the east side. The business properties right now, we, at some point, we were looking at bringing utilities up that side, and then we kind of shifted over to the middle.
Oh, no, I think they're both still on the table.
We've looked both, yeah.
Yeah. I think part of the... Not to derail, but part of the reason for the hesitation on the east was the disruption to the existing operations there. But after speaking with the property owners, they didn't have any concerns, so we're actually in process of evaluating those two options, so that's still to be determined.
So what does that do, then, to the road that we had contemplated coming off of the roundabout and going south, like, one lot later, down to 113th?
To 113th.
Yeah.
That could still be a connection regardless of utilities. In fact, that was... That's more for the access for the existing property owners on 113th. That access could be shifted to the east. Again, there's gonna be wetland impacts there as well. Not to mention, it's also a longer detour, if you will, for those folks to get to Dayton Parkway rather than going to the north there. Now, whether or not that connection from 113th goes directly to the roundabout, or the roundabout connection goes to the east...
Right.
And the connection from 113th tees into that, that's still to be determined. I mean, that's a couple of the options that should be contemplated with this moratorium.
And is there anything... Is there anything we do here that could impact whether... I know we... There wasn't much discussion with this at the time, and maybe it's kind of totally outside the scope of this, but having trucks sent around about there seems odd. If in 10 or 15 years, is there anything we do here that could cause a problem there? Was restoring, putting that back to, say, control a light intersection instead of roundabout, or...
If you ever wanted to remove the roundabout, I don't foresee it would be an impediment. Typically, they're more compact and take up less space, so I would think it could be accommodated.
I'm just a little bit worried we're gonna have five different layouts here and waste some time, but I don't know.
Well, that's why I wanted... I was hoping to get like a here, your road options, and then from the road options, I'd be like, okay, well, I like these land use. That was why... Because I'm also having that fear, if we all come and we're like, we each have completely different land use, then... And half of them are just not even an option, because there can't do a road like that. But I've never done this before.
One thing I would like to share also is, no matter what we do, that's not what's gonna happen there. Because it's gonna be the developer that knows the market and knows what can develop. So I mean, again, it's kind of for the concept level of, let's figure out what we want there in the roads. Not necessarily this is the exact boundaries of everything, if you will.
Is it more a question of kind of an industrial or not kind of question?
That's... Use of the wetlands, yes, it is.
Use of the wetlands.
Yeah. So there was kind of a wetland, I'm gonna call it wetland corridor, that goes north and south. And so, we've had lots of conversations on this area, but one of the directions that we've had is have more industrial. And so, we've got to figure out, okay, where is that industrial gonna go?
Can I ask where... Who says that?
I believe it was... I know it was the planning commission.
More industrial in this area.
Yeah, I don't remember if that was repeated by the council or not. So that was more in relationship to discussions on the master plan.
My only comment is, I agree with Bill. I would not run a road, a truck road to East French Lake Road.
If this goes into...
If this goes industrial, you don't want it connected up to.
Yeah.
You don't want the truck site connected up to.
Not a chance. Be the dumbest.
Yeah.
Be the second dumbest, no.
But then it does seem like it would kind of push the thought of running something from the roundabout across to it. If, yeah.
The idea of five different little maps would be kind of, the only other map I've ever driven, ever made, you guys haven't seen, so.
I will share it if you'd like. It's, I will share it just so that you can be entertained. I thought it was a great map. I kept it for myself. It's on my wall.
What would be easiest for you?
Not having an opinion. And let him draw.
It seems like that's, the question is, is industrial, medium density? Is that what it seems like?
Well, but there's also mixed-use, business park, commercial, like, they're all here.
That's, yeah.
And so, I don't think it's just industrial, high-density or medium-density. I think it is, well, what about the commercial that was here? What about the business park that was here? What about the mixed-use that was here? Are we still interested in those things? Like, I don't think it's just industrial, residential. I don't think it's just that.
No, it's not, because once that main road comes through, and it's going to happen someday.
What main road?
Going crossing into Ramsey.
Dane Parkway?
Oh, but.
Dane Parkway?
Yeah, it's all connected. I mean, you're going to have, you're going to have commercial and business park all through there. Again, we'll all be gone except Stephanie.
But this.
Maybe not you.
How old do you think I am?
I know.
It's a kind kind of birthday party on Saturday.
I don't, I don't know that.
It's impossible.
We need to worry about that for days.
No. Thank you, Scott.
Is there any, I mean, you know, a lot has changed since that comp plan was done, but it's hard for me to unscramble the land uses that are on that comp plan in this area. And they don't usually follow property lines. They, there doesn't seem to be, to my eyes anyway, you know, obvious delineation of why you would stop this one here and start that one there. Is there anything historical that we can look to to say, here's why we did what we did, before we throw it out, I guess?
Yep. So, the original comp plan was done in 2030. The 2030 comp plan is when we had the X pattern design for what was going to be called Dayton Parkway Extension at that time. I mean, that is when the X pattern was supposed to connect up the interchange to 129th Avenue in Dayton, essentially at the turn on Fernbrook and 129th. Guess the straightest shot was directly across in an X pattern, and that's how the land use at that time was derived.
But not this land.
But not this land use, because that was then adjusted slightly to more line up with.
We had.
Supposed to go to the south side. The road was supposed to go to the south side of that wetland and then up towards Zanzibar. Essentially, it's supposed to split through the middle of them, from what I understand.
Do you have a?
I don't think he has a map.
Okay. You can, you can see along where the commercial was, that was where the road is supposed to go.
Yes, and split down the middle.
And the other curve there, so we actually had meetings, very similar to the city center meetings that we had, where we had consultants come in and tell us all the good stories. And everything was laid out. And there are probably some slides and some handouts from then somewhere, but, yeah, it all had rhyme and reason back then. But.
You're going to beat yourself up again.
Then the big monkey wrench went into it, and we straightened that road up. And that actually wasn't the problem. The problem was, we took a road that was going to curve up to that, to the intersection of 117 and French Lake, and we ran it straight up. That was the issue. And so.
We didn't do that.
Well, it got done.
It happened.
And so, that's why, that's why the commercial stuff is so weird looking, because there were roads on both sides of that.
So, at this point, we just need a concept planet crivel here. That's what we're looking for. I guess direction and how to start would be good as well, but.
Note also, I mean, if you're not comfortable with the scope or you're looking for something different, we can absolutely.
Seems like you are.
Adjust, adjust the scope or go a different direction. This was just based on the information we had that was discussed. And to be honest, it was discussions while I was on vacation, so I didn't partake in them. So, this is the interpretation of others that were involved.
So, from this, you'll have two concept plans. It will be revised into a third. If you're not happy with anything.
So, two drafts, maybe?
Two drafts.
Which we then will consolidate down to a final.
Final. If you're not happy with the final, we can come up with another plan.
Are you not comfortable with that scope?
I, I am, I just.
You can always spend more money.
Uh-huh.
So, you can always spend more money and come up with another plan.
Yeah. My only concern is.
Do another study.
Are you thinking that you would just set the land use, either or, or maybe mix it up as you guys see fit? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, we'll work with staff. I mean, there was some feedback from planning commission. I know that, I mean, I had made a, you know, $100 bubble diagram at one time, and that generated some discussion on this is too much, too much industrial or too much commercial that should be shrunk down. So, I mean, we can do some iterations on that, for sure.
A $100 plan only took about 20 minutes, huh?
It would be long.
Yep. He did a bubble diagram in 20 minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, it might be nice to get, yeah, their input on what you're doing too, but, okay. I guess I'm.
Yeah, I assumed the two plans, the two drafts would go to both planning commission and us for feedback, and then it would be all of our feedback that would drive the final draft.
That's what the council would like to do, then, yes.
That's, that was my sort of assumption.
Okay. Yes?
You got to do, I would have had fun drawing one, making a map.
You can still draw it.
You can still do it. No one said you can't do it and give it to Jason.
Email it to.
Yep. Please do.
Send him a letter or a receipt.
Whatever you want to do.
I will. I'm planning on doing that. I'm also going to send out his drawing that he sent me. Everyone can enjoy it.
That'd be good.
And I'll do a bubble diagram with it.
I'll need my drawing tomorrow, by the way.
Though I did ask Jason a question that he didn't have a chance to answer.
I'll need it tomorrow.
Would it be helpful for you if we gave you our thoughts on land use before you started?
It absolutely would.
Okay, well, then we can do that.
You?
So, you get to color, Scott.
You do get to, you get to color.
Make a decision.
We did.
So, I'll make a motion that we move ahead with this proposal.
All right. Danny, a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Paul is a favor, say aye?
Aye.
Elizabeth Post say no? Currys five to zero. And we are on to item S.
That only took 25 minutes.
You guys moved so fast in the beginning, because I wasn't here, and that came and slowed us down again. I don't know that you had anything to do with it. Maybe.
This item's been in front of council prior and been discussed even a little bit tonight. So, we're looking at signalizing the intersections on Dayton Parkway as shown on either side of the Dayton Parkway interchange on 94 between Brockton Avenue and between 81, as indicated. Just to look for the development in the area. So, the westerly intersection, as was discussed earlier, is currently not used, but the intersection is set up for this to occur, and it would support both the Dayton Creek and the Dayton Parkway neighborhood, as well as the to-be-determined name, but the property to the north there as well. And then similarly, on the, I'll call it the east side of 94, north side, Opus and Quick Trip, both of which are under construction and ready for, for business, or getting ready for business. This project was discussed back in June of last year, that these signals would be needed for these areas to develop further. There's already pressure on the easterly intersection, and there definitely will be pressure on the west once development occurs. At the time, we were going to use special assessments for the funding. With that direction, we initiated a feasibility study, which is a requirement for Chapter 429 of the state statute to be able to impose special assessment to benefiting properties. There was then hesitation, if you will, or coordination with the developers and the developments themselves, and whether or not special assessments should be used. So, we paused efforts on it. It's a pretty significant effort to put together the assessment roles and different components of the report. So, it was put on hold, I want to say this winter sometime, maybe it was, yeah, it was probably later winter, maybe. The decision was made, let's not use special assessments, but instead advance municipal state aid dollars, which we could use state aid funds allotted to the city of Dayton. So, we went that direction. Under that understanding, we finished the feasibility report more as a technical report that does not have the assessment role associated with it. But it does give justification to the project and has the technical backing for the decisions made. So, the report findings, just to whittle them all the way down to the basics, feel free to read through the report if you want to know more detail. The project is certainly justified, and just to note, we did use projected traffic. Not always done, especially on county roads, but we do feel that we should plan for future growth on these. So, in other words, the warrants might not be there today, but they absolutely will be once at least even some of these developments occur that were proposed. So, that does meet warrants. We did look at the costs. We have the preliminary budget numbers. We just are staying with those for now, but they still seem to be appropriate for the project cost itself. And just to note that the anticipated impacts for the construction will be minimal. It should be limited to even single lane closures. There's multiple lanes out there that can be done off-peak times. So, there won't be any, anything more than a single lane closure throughout the life of the project. So, not much for disruptions at all. So, just as a reminder, the budgetary cost is 750,000 per intersection. That should be for everything included with it, for a total project cost of 1.5 million. The anticipated funding sources for the project, as I think has been mentioned in the DA for Quick Trip, it's not exactly 440,000, but it's very close to that, that they've agreed to contribute towards the project. We did get approval for the advancement of state aid funds, up to $1 million on this project. I will note on there, I don't expect this to even be needed, but we also did an advance for South Diamond Lake Road, and with that one coming in as low as it did, there's unused advanced dollars, if you will. We haven't talked to them about it switching between the projects, but we expect, since they have been allocated to the city, we could use it on this project if we had to. So, just to note, if we get in a position where that's needed. I think there's been discussions with existing property owners on potential voluntary contributions. I don't know the status of that, but I think we continue to work towards that, and if agreements could be made, that could offset some of the city expenses on the project. And then just to note, if there's any uncovered balance, the City Transportation Fund would be the source for that. So, the next step would be to complete the plans and specifications, such the project could be bid for construction. If those are authorized tonight, we're expecting it to be presented back to council in July. Bids open in August and then start construction in September. I would like to point out, and I don't know if this got in the proposal itself, one of the, I don't want to say common, but not uncommon occurrences on these projects is there will be long lead times on some of the components for signals. Often, the cabinets for the electronics, and then the mast arms for the signals themselves can be extended. So, we're hopeful this could start in September and be constructed throughout. I don't think construction takes maybe one to two months for it. However, if there's long lead times, that might get stretched out to when they could be actually put into service. We would like to still follow the schedule, because a lot of the work is underground and using concrete bases and other that we'd like done before freeze-up. So, is there, even if there is a long lead time, we'd like to get the work started sooner. So, just to note that caveat, that this might not be up and running in October if there is lead times. Hopefully not, but in case there is. So, the recommendation would be to, I guess, accept the feasibility report or the technical report on it, and then approve the engineering services for it. Included in the proposal is the design and the bidding. We do not have costs accounted for construction services on this project at this time. Part of the reason for that is we have initiated but haven't fully discussed having Hennepin County perform or complete some of the services in the field for us. The expectation is that some point Dayton Parkway will become under their jurisdiction. We want them to, want them to be part of this design and project delivery, such that we don't have to redo anything when that jurisdictional transfer occurs. So, our hopes is that they might be able to use their staff to perform some of those at a reduced or maybe even no cost to the city. So, we didn't include anything in there. I don't know how that'll pan out. Our conversations have not got far yet, but we'll continue those discussions and hopefully work towards something that can benefit the city through the construction fees. That's all I had.
It seems to me that the one is needed sooner than the other. Quick Trip opens their doors, we have a problem, right?
Yes.
The apartment buildings are not, I mean, this other thing, this can go, but that traffic doesn't materialize for a couple of years. I understand what you're saying, that by 2029, everything justifies all of this. I'm just wondering, given the head scratching we were doing earlier around the directions, right, the not-Quick-Trip one, that is there significant disadvantages to moving ahead with the one and not the other? And maybe that only means the construction of it, not necessarily the design.
Sure. I can look. I mean, your economy of scale would go down certainly, so your overall project cost would likely be higher. How much higher, I'm not sure. And as you mentioned, I mean, if it is just the construction and we're buying all the equipment upfront, you know, maybe a lot of those cost savings would still be realized. We'd just take the equipment and store it, Public Works, for example.
What is the equipment versus?
The cost of the equipment? That's a great question. I don't, I don't really know the breakdown of it. I would say it's probably, is a really rough guess, 250,000 to 300,000 for the equipment?
For the whole thing?
For each intersection.
Well, for each.
For each, yeah. Generally.
Buying it together gives savings.
Generally, it is. I mean, just the more you buy of something, the cheaper it is. Sam's Club is cheaper than.
Well.
Depends.
But, well.
It's more expensive total.
Maybe a bad example. Usually, the larger projects do have some advantage, because you're only paying one mobilization for more efforts.
It does seem like this, there's a lot of questions about the Western Light, including funding. I, let me ask you this about the 429. Is the documentation such that you could go through and complete that on just the Western Light? Or is it kind of a?
Sure. Yeah. In fact, that was the intent. I don't think we were going to assess, because it's a, it's a lot easier, so, again, not to derail, but the difficulty or the challenge with the 429 is distributing and proving benefit. You can only charge property or impose assessments in the value of benefit they receive. On the, I'll just go to the, so it makes a little more sense. So, the one to the west, it benefits very clearly Dayton Creek, Dayton Parkway neighborhood in the future to the north, because that's the only access point for those. So, that's very clear, that's the benefit.
And they're the only ones who are going to use it.
They're the only ones that need to turn on to Dayton Parkway, or they're future users. But if there's nothing on those properties, the signal's not needed for any other reason. The other one becomes much more challenging, because you have all the users, like territorial, those two cells.
That one I'm not too concerned about, because we do have a kind of a split.
You got a lot of the funding for that one already.
Well, in the 250, it makes sense for the city. My concern is really the west one.
Yeah.
We have no funding figured out, and.
The advanced state aid is in place for use.
Yeah, but that takes away from.
Other projects.
Yeah, other projects. It's money we can't use elsewhere.
But do we, we anticipate that that Dayton Creek one's going to get done.
It will, it will be needed when something develops there.
Well, we don't know if it's a year, two years, or 10 years.
Well, and the other thing we don't know is, when are they going to kick in for this?
Either they are or they're not building.
And that's.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah, it almost seems like, I don't know what the. Yeah, it almost seems like, I don't know what the economy of scale would amount to, but it does seem like we should go forward to the east one and sit on the west one.
We, we could, and I, I'm a little bit nervous of giving this option, but we could do the base bid as the easterly one or...
That's what I'm thinking.
As an alternate. Sometimes that, that can kind of skew your bids and cost you more, if, especially when it's such a big, I mean, we'd be doubling the project. Sometimes they'll pad their numbers because they don't know if the likelihood of the second one's...
It's kind of like taking change orders out of the equation, huh?
We can write there, would not be appreciated.
Mobilization would change if they're not getting, doing the second half of it, so they might stand more...
Yeah, that, that's a good example. So they would probably put all of their mob in the base, but then if you add the second, there's probably going to be more mobilization in there, because it's going, that you wouldn't see otherwise. So it, it's hard to say, but it's, it's probably going to add some. I don't know. But it is a good way of controlling how much you need to award. So there, there is some benefit from that standpoint. It's just a little more, it's usually easier if you're, if you're bidding something that's a million and you're looking at adding like 40,000 versus work of something, because there's not really any markup with it, but when you're...
Doubling.
Either giving them a half, half a month of work or a month and a half of work, for example.
Are they possibly going to like front-load it or east-load it? Is that exactly what you're thinking?
Um...
If we just said...
It, it can be. I mean, there's, I don't want to say games, but there's a lot of things that they can do to incentivize you to award the second one, so they can put their money up front or, yeah, there's...
It just seems like that one's, the funding to me bothers me, and we have, we don't have it laid out, and just at least getting the smell that there's going to be a problem with funding on this one. And yeah, we could use MSA dollars, but I, just again, that's money we can't use anywhere else. And clearly, they're going to use this.
And this is, we're just authorizing the preparation of plans, though, correct?
Yes.
Or, so, does it harm us to get the plans made?
No, I don't think so. Because the design, I mean...
The design, the design.
I drove over there just to see with my own eyes. I mean, there's, that's where the intersection's going. There's going to be a light there. So it's, that's really unlikely to be throwaway.
Yeah.
You know, when it gets built and who's paying for it?
That's a, that's an open question.
More of an open question. With that one, certainly than the east one, which seems like a certainty, and we've got more in place in terms of how we're taking, you know, we're going to pay for that.
But at this point...
But the design...
Yeah.
I call them north and south more than east and west.
But at this point, what we're approving is the preparation of plans and specifications. And we can do that now, and then later decide if we want to go for bidding on both or one. It's like, we don't have to decide the bidding question at this moment, and that might get us time to hear back from our, our trouble spot before we have to make that decision on bidding. Right now, we're just saying plans or no plans, and I say let's do plans for both while we're at it.
It'll be in July, the plans.
Yeah, that's a, that's a formal step that's required. So, yeah, we would not go for bidding before coming to council and getting authorization.
You know, all right, so we, we have plans in July. At that point, we still have the ability to decide what path we're taking in terms of how it'll be packaged for bidding.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, there would, we would, presumably, we would prepare it as a base bid for everything, but you could decide at that time and say, make it an alternate. There would be a little bit extra effort for that, but it's a pretty minor adjustment at that point. I mean, that's a, a few of the forms and some notes on the plan sheets. So it's, in the scheme of things, it's a small effort.
You good with that?
Yeah.
You good with that? Sounds good to me. Oh, yeah, we need a...
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion, second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. And we are eight minutes behind.
And we have to stall for 15 minutes.
That's not kind. Kind.
Um, okay, so the next item, we have ordinance 2025-14, so we're just going to go through the city code and slowly update it and work way at it. We did hear back from our attorney. We did have a couple of questions of staff, so if you want to look at specifically 31.01, in the meetings for whatever reason, it says that all meetings of city council shall adjourn by 11:00 PM unless the majority of the form presents and agree to continue past that time. We've never followed that. That can easily be struck through and not part of the code, or you can put whatever time you would like in there and follow it.
Was there a problem with midnight for some reason? A different issue?
Last time this code was updated was in 1975.
Nine?
Yeah, no.
Five or nine, so I'm hoping there wasn't a problem at midnight at that time, but maybe.
It's probably my time.
I think it was some state statute that kicked in or something with midnight, but...
Carries the median until the next...
Yeah, so we tracked it, there's no legal requirement.
I'd strike it, because all we're going to do is just say, if we're supposed to end at 11, I need a vote to go forward, and we're going to do it, because we're right there. And although Scott will say no.
But the other four will say yes.
What's that?
Exactly.
Insist that we end our meetings at 11.
I'd strike it. I'm okay with striking it.
I don't care.
Strike it.
And then the only other thing that we were wondering legally why is that we didn't hear about until after the fact is 31.06. And it says, every ordinance and resolution shall be presented in writing and shall be read in full. So there is no requirement, sometimes on charter, charter cities, there's, we're required to read it in full. So I would just suggest striking that as well. And then...
Which, where was that, 31.06?
31.06.
You do not need to read it in full.
Under ordinance, resolutions, motions, petitions, and communications. Just to strike the part where we're supposed to be reading it in full.
You do not have to read it in full, essentially, if you've struck that from the right. And you are not required to do that, so.
We've never, yeah.
Other than that, it's fairly simple, just updating the code to meet what we're doing currently today, unless you notice any other changes that you would like.
I have a math question. On 31.09A1, it says that it will be populations, populations of 1,000 people, both larger or smaller. But then the example is 5,300, and it says, so we'll look at cities 4,000 to 6,000. Shouldn't that be 4,300 to 6,300 if we're going 1,000 higher and 1,000 lower?
There is that. Yes.
I mean, that's generally speaking how that works. And then a follow-up question of, we've grown a lot. Should we push that to 10,300, since that's actually closer to our current city size?
That's an example, isn't it?
I think that was just an example.
I understand that it's just an example, but if we're going to go through and change the numbers anyway, should we...
Yeah, we can easily change it.
That's what I'm saying. If we, if we're going to fix the math, because the math is wrong.
To reflect it to be more of an example of what we have.
Yeah. That would be my vote. No matter what, please change the math, because my math teacher brain is dying a little bit. It's just, I cannot, it's not, 5,300 plus 1,000 is 6,300, it's not 6,000.
I think it's just rounded, is what you're doing. Make it an easy number.
But then why did they use 5,300? Why wasn't that just 5,000?
Anybody, are we, are we good with these so far, then?
Because then it was 5,300 at the time, and they did it.
That's my thought, so.
I'm good with everything.
Other than my math, my little OCD need.
We'll make, we will make that change.
Thank you.
All right.
It doesn't, so to that one, we haven't looked at stipend for a long time, at least not in my time. I don't know.
About five years ago?
2000 and oh, 2011 is last time you guys had a stipend raise.
Hmm, no.
I'm pretty sure.
It was after that. This was in 2016, I believe.
I don't think it was happened in 2016. I think it was 2011.
Yeah.
Well, we reviewed it for sure.
Well, you may have reviewed it.
Yeah.
You may have reviewed it, but I don't think you gave yourself an increase.
Oh...
No, we didn't.
So I mean, so I don't think the...
I think we talked about changing how we do the math.
Yeah, your last increase was like in 2008 or 2011, something like that.
So there isn't in, in here, I mean, it's sort of a description of how, how you would do it, but no mechanism on what triggers it. And that's the part I...
Would be requested by council, from my understanding.
So I think in the ordinance, it reads after every election, and I think it's been failed to be followed. So I think that just needs to go on a list of someone's responsibility then to follow up.
And it kicks in after the next election, right?
Yeah. It's, it's in here. City council stipend amount shall be recalculated and go into effect the January following the general election. So it's just, it's supposed to be checked, and it hasn't been, correct?
Well, it was checked once in 2016.
It was on, so I think it must have been 18 or 19.
Okay, maybe it was.
19, okay.
But it wasn't adjusted.
It's never been changed.
Might not.
It's been 40 something for 10 years.
Yeah, and it's done different. I know some cities, you have a base pay and then it's, you get paid per meeting and it, I don't know. Ours is pretty simple.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't need to make it more complicated. It just seems to me like there should be a periodic review, and it's not clear. I mean, I guess what you're pointing at kind of says that.
We just haven't done it.
That, that, you know, that it wouldn't go into, it'll be recalculated and go into effect with the following, the next election. But I don't know. That wasn't clear to me to say that before the election, then that review would be done.
Yeah, we can add to the budget process, too. There could be something we can do in the budget process.
Do we want to change language in there that says it will be done?
During the budget process?